Counselor Zachem.
Yeah.
Madam President, we have.
Thank you very much. We have no special presentations today, so we will begin with an invocation from our wonderful clerk and followed by the pledge. So I'd like to invite all councilors and guests to please rise for the invocation and remain standing. We'll follow that again with the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk?
Good morning.
Thank you.
O thou who made us one nation out of many people, amidst our diversities of race and tradition and faith, unite us in a common love of freedom. Revive us in a spirit of devotion to the common good, so that we may open new doors to the neglected and oppressed. Cleanse the heart of our nation from that greed that preys upon others. Endow our leaders with wisdom that they may stand among nations as an example of benevolence and exalted justice. Help us to make this land a common workshop of its people, where all may find their place and work, keen to do their best. Hear these words of the Athenian Pericles: "I would have you day by day fix your eyes upon the greatness of your country until you become filled with love for her; and when you are impressed by the spectacular of her glory, reflect that it has been acquired by men and women who knew their duty and had the courage to do it." And these words of the Hebrew psalmist: "Let the people give praise, O God, of all nations." Amen.
We'll do the pledge now. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will begin with approval of the minutes from last meeting. Are there any changes or amendments? Seeing and hearing none, the minutes stand approved. And Madam Clerk, if we could read communications from his honor, the mayor.
Docket number 1458, message and order amending Chapter 16, Section 12.3 of the City of Boston Code Ordinance Advertising, filed in the office of the City Clerk on November 27, 2017.
Docket 1458 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 1459, message and order to reduce the FY-18 appropriation for reserve collective bargaining by $2,681,157 to provide funding for various departments for the FY-18 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Boston and SENA.
Docket 1459 will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 1460, message and order approving a supplemental appropriation of $2,681,157 for various departments to cover the FY-18 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Boston and SENA, filed in the office of the City Clerk on November 27, 2017.
Docket 1460 will also be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 1461, message and order approving an appropriation of $285,393 for the administrative and operating expenses of the City of Boston's Community Preservation Committee, known as CPC, for fiscal year commencing July 1, 2017, and ending June 30, 2018, and further ordered that $17,894,608 be appropriated and reserved for the City of Boston's Community Preservation Fund annual revenues for further appropriations for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2017, and ending June 30, 2018, upon the recommendations of the Community Preservation Committee.
Docket 1461 will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 1462, message and order to declare surplus of the city-owned formerly Boston Redevelopment Authority-owned parcels of vacant land and transfer the care, custody, management, and control of said property to the Public Facilities Commission. The vacant parcels are located at 1 Akron Street in Roxbury District, 11 Chipman Street in Dorchester District, 52 Elmont Street, the Roxbury District, 24 Weston Street in the Mattapean District, 97 Marcellus Street in the Roxbury District, 93 to 95 Marcellus Street in the Roxbury District, 101 Marcellus Street in the Roxbury District, 105 Marcellus Street in the Roxbury District, 109 Marcellus Street in the Roxbury District, 113 Marcellus Street in the Roxbury District, 115 Marcellus Street in the Roxbury District, 30 Mildred Street in the Mattapean District, 85 Selden Street in the Dorchester District, 0 Tucker Street in the Dorchester District, 436 Warren Street in the Dorchester District, 26 West Cottage Street in the Dorchester District, and 30 Westfield Street in the Dorchester District.
Docket 1462 will be assigned to the Committee on Planning and Development.
Docket number 1463, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $13,816,000 in the form of the FFY 2017 Urban Area Security Initiative awarded by the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, passed through the Mass. Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the Mayor's Office of Emergency Management. The grant will be -- will fund the continued support of unique planning exercises, training, and operational needs that will assist in building enhanced and sustainable security capacity to help prevent, respond to, and recover from threats or acts of terrorism, including chemical, biological, radiological, nuclear, and explosives incidents.
On docket 1463, I'll defer to the Chair of Public Safety and Criminal Justice as to sending it to committee or taking action.
Thank you, Madam President. I rising to ask that we suspend and pass just due to the nature of the funding, but also our calendars and the schedule for the council. This is money that we've seen in the past. It's vital to the Office of Emergency Management. It's pretty self-explanatory. It's an amount of $13,816,000. It's from the Urban Area Security Initiative, which is awarded by the United States Department of Homeland Security. It passes through the Massachusetts Office of Public Safety and Security. It's used by our department to fund continued support of unique planning exercises, training, operational needs that will assist them in responding to recovering from threats or acts of terrorism, including, of course, chemical, biological, radiological, nuclear, and explosive incidents. So today I ask that we suspend and pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. At this time, Counselor Campbell moves for suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1463. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1463 has been passed.
Docket number 1464, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend in the amount of $628,365 in form of a grant for the FFY 16 AFG Operations Award awarded by the Federal Emergency Management Agency to be administered by the Fire Department. The grant would fund prefabricated fire props to train firefighters on wind-driven fires, mid- and high-rise operations, plus expenses for a four-day driver training program that will bring the Boston Fire Department into compliance with the National Fire Protection Agency, known as NFPA standards, 1451, 1500, and 1911.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I ask that we suspend and pass for docket number 1464, which is a grant in the amount of 179 -- I'm sorry. I'm reading the wrong one. 628,365 dollars to the Fire Department. It's an operations award. They've received this in the past. It's used for, just like it says, to fund prefabricated fire props to train firefighters on wind-driven fires, mid- and high-rise operations. It also covers a four-day driver training program that will bring the Fire Department into compliance with the National Fire Protection Association. Again, similar to docket number 1463, just for timing and because it is the end of the year, I'm asking that we suspend and pass. And this grant, as well as docket 1463, we've seen this before, so there are detailed records on how this money has been used in the past, and I anticipate it being used for the same thing. I ask that we suspend and pass docket number 1464. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. Counselor Campbell moves for suspension and passage of docket 1464. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1464 has been passed.
Docket number 1465, messages and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend in the amount of $200,000 in the form of a grant for the Beta Blocks Grant from the John S. and James L. Knight Foundation to be administered by the Mayor's Office. The grant will fund experiments that aim to improve civic life for supporting Boston's efforts to create a process for deploying sensors in urban environments.
Docket 1465 will be assigned to the Committee on Environment and Sustainability.
Docket number 1466, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend in the amount of $179,000 in the form of a grant for the FY-18 Local Cultural Council Program awarded by the Massachusetts Cultural Council to be administered by the Office of Arts and Culture. The grants would fund subawards for arts, humanities, and science-related programming within the City of Boston.
Chair, as in my capacity as Chair of the Arts and Culture Committee, moves for suspension and passage of this grant, similar reasoning in terms of time of the year and urgency of the funding. All in favor, say aye of suspending and passing docket 1466. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1466 has been passed.
Docket number 1467, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend in the amount of $100,000 in the form of a grant for the economic mobility lab awarded by the Rockefeller Foundation to be administered by the Mayor's Office. The grant will fund the cost of researching and planning an economic mobility lab to advance economic mobility and security for lower and lower-middle-class Bostonians.
On docket 1467, Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Jobs, Wages, and Workforce Development, Counselor Baker.
Thank you, Madam President. For the same reasons that were stated for all the other grants, I'd like to ask to suspend and pass.
Thank you, Counselor Baker. Counselor Baker moves for suspension and passage of docket 1467. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1467 has been passed.
Docket number 1468, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend in the amount of $69,975 in the form of a grant to support federal FY 2017 Emergency Management Performance Grant awarded by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, passed through the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, to be administered by the Mayor's Office of Emergency Management. The grant will fund a consultant to update the functional needs of specific populations and neighborhoods into all aspects of the City of Boston's emergency management plan program.
Madam Clerk, could you read docket 1469 as well, and I'll ask the committee chair to talk on both.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 1469, message and order to accept a donation for the benefit of the City of Boston, three bicycles for the use of District C6 of the Boston Police Department. The bicycles will allow for continued contact and visibility within the South Boston neighborhood and help improve the day-to-day lives of residents, workers, and visitors in the area, which will further facilitate the district's services and benefit the residents of Boston.
On dockets 1468 and 1469, Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I ask that we suspend and pass docket number 1468 and docket number 1469. I think they're both self-explanatory due to timing reasons. It'd be great to get this out to our districts as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. We'll vote individually or docket by docket on 1468. All in favor of suspension and passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1468 has been passed. And on docket 1469, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1469 has been passed. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the rest of the dockets in this section together. Thank you.
Docket number 1470, message and order for the confirmation of reappointment of Terry North as a member of the Back Bay West Bay State Road Architectural Conservation Commission for term expiring June 30, 2020. Docket number 1471, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Pamela Beal as a member of the Back Bay West Bay State Road Architectural Conservation Commission for term expiring June 30, 2020. Docket number 1472, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Ruth Knopf as a member of the Bay State Village Historic District Commission for term expiring April 1, 2020. Docket number 1473, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Kathleen McDermott as a member of the Bay State Historic District Commission for term expiring April 1, 2020. Docket number 1474, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Stephen Dunwell as an alternate member of the Bay Village Historic District Commission for a term expiring April 1, 2020. Docket number 1475, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Thomas Hoddling as an alternate member of the Boston Landmarks Commission for term expiring June 30, 2020. Docket number 1476, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Lynn Smilich as a member, a full member, of the Boston Landmarks Commission for term expiring June 30, 2020. Docket number 1477, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Kirsten Hoffman as a full member of the Boston Landmarks Commission for term expiring June 30, 2019. Docket number 1478, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of David Burducci as a full member of the Boston Landmarks Commission for term expiring June 30, 2020. Docket number 1479, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Felicia Jacques as a member of the Boston Landmarks Commission for term expiring June 30, 2019. Docket number 1480, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Diana Parkon as an alternate member of the Boston Landmarks Commission for term expiring June 30, 2019. Docket number 1481, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Francois Elise as a member of the St. Patoleph Architectural Conservation District Commission for term expiring June 30, 2020. And docket number 1482, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of John Carriff as a member of the Fort Point Channel Landmark District Commission for term expiring May 1, 2020.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Dockets number 1470 through 1482 will be assigned to the Committee on Planning and Development. Reports of public officers and others.
Docket number 1483, communication was received from Brian P. Golden, Director of Boston Planning and Development Agency regarding proposed minor modifications to the South End Urban Renewal Plan, project number MAS R-56, with respect to parcel 22A.
Docket 1483 will be placed on file.
Docket number 1484, notice was received from the Mayor of the appointment of Drew Smith as the first Assistant Collector Treasurer effective November 13, 2017.
Docket 1484 will be placed on file.
Docket number 1485, communication was received from Dion S. Irish, Chair of Board of Election Certifying Results of Elections held on November 7, 2017, for the Mayor and City Council.
Docket 1485 will be placed on file.
Docket number 1486, communication was received from Counselor O'Malley requesting the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations pull docket number 0132 and ordinance regarding the reduction of plastic bags in Boston from the committee to give the public 48 hours' notice of a potential vote.
Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. If we could take docket 0132 out of order. We normally would be mad at pulling from the green sheet, so through the chair, asking that we pull the matter from the green sheets now.
Thank you. So we'll first place docket 1486, the communication from Counselor O'Malley on file. And then, Madam Clerk, the Government Operations Committee Chair is requesting, if you could read docket 0132, page 3 of 13 on the green sheets into the record.
Thank you. On the green sheets in the Committee on Government Operations, docket number 0132, sponsored by Counselor O'Malley, an ordinance regarding the reduction of plastic bags in Boston. The date referred to committee was January 11, 2017. Hearings were held on 3/27/2017 and 3/29/2017.
Thank you. Docket 0132 now before the council. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This matter was sponsored by Counselor O'Malley and yourself. Initially back in 2016, the Committee on Government Operations held a three-hour-long hearing back on December 13 of 2016. At that hearing, we heard from a variety of representatives, in particular Commissioner Kyle Spector representing the City of Boston's Environment Department came down to testify. There was a discussion on fees, encouraging the use of reusable bags, and there was also further environmental concerns raised at that point. The committee revisited the issue back on March 27 with a very lengthy committee working session. So at this time, pulling the matter for a vote, but we'll defer to lead sponsor, City Counselor Matt O'Malley through the chair.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Chair recognizes Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Today I'll be pulling docket 0132 in ordinance regarding the reduction of plastic bags in Boston for a vote. I'd like to begin by first thanking the council president, my co-sponsor in this, and so many other great environmental initiatives, City Counselor-at-Large Michelle Wu, for her partnership and her leadership. Moreover, I wanted to thank her team and mine, specifically Jessica Morris, for their Sisyphean efforts in crafting this legislation. Next, I did want to thank the Chairman of Government Operations, Michael Flaherty, for his partnership and leadership in this. We would not get to this day but for his leadership. It's obviously a very complicated issue, a complex issue, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for all of your steadfast work along the way. Next, I'd like to thank specifically Ricky Harvey of BYO Bag Boston, and so many incredible advocates, as well as the Sierra Club and Girl Scout Troops Number 68277 among our all incredible advocates. With all due respect to the lobbyists from the industry, many of whom are with us today, we have the best in the business. We have Claire Ablett, Eleanor Pelletiere, and Kalita Beliveau, three 11-year-olds, activists who have been the driving force behind this. Ladies, you are a credit to your families, to your city, and thank you for your incredible work. Collectively, they collected almost 2,000 signatures. They spent quite a lot of time in our council colleague, Counselor-at-Large in East Asabi, Georgia, Stitch House, making reusable bags, and they truly are phenomenal young people. So very briefly, I want to begin by framing the problem, then touch upon the process before offering the solution. The problem is plastic bags. I will readily admit that they can be convenient, but I would suggest that the convenience does not outweigh the cost, the significant cost associated with them. Now, plastic bags are a relatively new construct. They weren't really prevalent before the mid-1970s, and since then, they have been harming our environment and creating litter at an alarming rate. Most plastic bags are created with polypropylene, which is manufactured from petroleum and gas. This means that they further our reliance on fossil fuels and are not biodegradable. The mass production of plastic has devastated nearly 700 species of marine animals. Over half of sea turtles have ingested plastic, and almost all seabirds have ingested plastic if we can and will continue to do so if we continue producing plastic at this rate. Worldwide, 1 trillion single-use plastic bags will be used this year. In Boston alone, that number is 357 million. 357 million plastic bags will be used in Boston this year alone. While plastic bags are only used for an average of 12 minutes, its impact on the city's trees, streets, and drains is permanently damaging. As a coastal city with over 660,000 residents, these plastic bags do not end up in their dedicated recycling bins at your local Whole Foods or Roach Brothers supermarket. They end up in our streets, in our storm gutters, in our trees tangled, in our wildlife, in our marine ecosystem. Plastic production has grown from 15 million tons in the mid-1960s to 322 million tons annually in 2015. Now, and this point is crucial, I would argue that as it currently stands, we are paying a fee for plastic bags. Businesses obviously factor the cost of these bags into their bottom line. In our Department of Public Works, water and sewer, parks, and other city employees spend time cleaning up these bags from trees, from parks, from lots, from storm drains, and from waterways. Casella, which is, all of you know, is our recycling contractor, reports that 20 tons of plastic bags are thrown into our single-stream recycling each month. Think of how flimsy a bag is, and think of that multiplied to the extent that 20 tons are in our recycling stream every month. They spend hours each day removing them from the equipment. We are paying for that indirectly as taxpayers. So the process on how we deal with this problem has been robust. On August 3 of 2016, the council president tasked me with creating a 90-day task force. We had our first meeting the next month on September 13 here in the council chamber, I believe it was the Piamonte Room. On October 4, we had our second task force meeting in Rosendale at the Arnold Arboretum Building. On October 6, an online survey was made public. We made sure that it was translated in Spanish, Vietnamese, and Mandarin Chinese. We had well over 800 responses. And on October 25 of last year, we had our third task force meeting. Following month, on November 16, we had a city council briefing. Thank many of you for attending. And on December 13, we had our city council hearing. On January 13 of this year, the ordinance was refiled by the council president and myself. And on March 27, Council Chairman of Government Ops, Michael Flaherty, held a working session. We have researched this thoroughly. I've spoken to city councilors from Washington, D.C., from Seattle. We've met with city officials from throughout cities and towns throughout the Commonwealth and beyond. And most importantly, we made sure that opponents of this ordinance and lobbyists from the industry had a seat at the table. Simply put, this has been among the most ecumenical, open, and transparent processes that I've ever been a part of. So what have we learned through this process? More than 60 countries have implemented this ban, including Ireland, Kenya, China, France, Haiti, and Italy. Countless cities and towns throughout the United States have put something in place. Every continent on the globe, with the exception, of course, of Antarctica, has cities, towns, villages, states, countries that have implemented some sort of a plastic bag ordinance. In the Commonwealth, in our state, 59 cities and towns have implemented a ban, including neighboring towns such as Brookline, Cambridge, Framingham, and Summerbowl. What are the results of these ordinances, of these bans, of these fees? In Seattle, they saw a 50% reduction in plastic bags and residential garbage. In Washington, D.C., businesses gave out 50% less plastic bags, and bag use went down by 85% within months of implementation. San Diego saw a 72% decrease of plastic bag litter since implementation. And to put that figure in context, in 2010, plastic bags were about 10% of their trash of litter. Plastic bags represented about 10% of litter. Today, that figure is 1.5%. San Jose, California, saw an 89% decrease of plastic bags in their storm drains, 60% decrease in their creeks, rivers, and lakes, and a 59% reduction on neighborhood streets. We have seen conclusively that these initiatives work. While we may not be the first to pass a bag ordinance, we can look to examples from around the world to see what works. Indeed, a key part of our research was figuring out what the successful strategies were and how we could prevent pratfalls. Because of that, I believe we've crafted one of the most successful and effective ordinances to date. Here's what this ordinance will do. The proposed ordinance would ban single-use plastic bags, add a 5-cent fee on paper bags with handle, those thicker 3-mill plastic bags, as well as compostable plastic bags. We recognize the fact that attaching a fee to anything is seldom popular, but the 5-cent figure is an amount that will both incentivize someone to bring a reusable bag without being too onerous. Additionally, as we have seen almost to an example, with every city or town and state, quite frankly, that has had industry folks and many businesses opposing these, once they've gone into implementation, you've seen the private sector really step up. You've seen individuals step up and offer reusable plastic bags. We're already doing it at the Elderly Commission here in Boston. That will continue. We also have this, if passed today and signed into law, this will have a one-year sort of ramping-up period. This won't go into effect until a year from now, so that will give us plenty of time to both work with the Boston Housing Authority, ABCD, Boston Center for Youth and Families, food banks. food banks, and farmers market to make sure that we can have intentional outreach to get this done. We can also encourage the mayor's EEOS to conduct a bag dive to provide a bag for each that is donated. We can work, and we can do this well because we've seen it done well in other cities and towns. We have worked closely with our neighbors. We know what the recipe is, how we can do this, and the benefits cannot be challenged. Boston has historically exhibited leadership on a whole host of moral, cultural, intellectual, environmental, and economic issues. Next year, we'll be hosting the International Climate Change Summit, in which thousands of climate leaders from across the globe will travel here. Yet, Boston is one of the few major cities who has yet to implement something. We can change that now. For a very small change, we can make a great environmental impact. We can help combat climate change. We can help get rid of litter. We can help beautify every neighborhood in the city of Boston. Let's write the Boston green print. Ladies and gentlemen, I urge your support in this today. We can pass it. It's the right thing to do. It's good for the environment. It's good for the taxpayer. Let's make it happen. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Chair recognizes Counsel Wu.
I just, I'm going to do my standing ovation for Counsel O'Malley. Wonderful. So it's been an incredible honor to be part of this process and many that the council has been working on to really plan and take actions for our next generations here in the city. There are so many people in this room who represent many, many other people who are not in this room, who have spent hours, weeks, months of time working on this, so thank you. The biggest thanks goes to Counsel O'Malley and his team. And you have just heard how much, not just how much work he's put in, how much research has been part of this, but how much he cares about this and how deeply this is part of his ethos as a public servant. So thank you. There's really nothing else that I could say about the process, the benefits, the data. I just want to emphasize how Counsel O'Malley has done an incredible job leading an open, transparent, rigorous process that has included everyone in getting us to this step. So I just want to add a few words about why this is hard. Because we take a lot of votes on the council, and, you know, many of them are feel-good votes, that we are doing the right thing, and kind of finding a way to take action. Some are a little, there are many other opinions and voices, and are the ones where not everyone's going to be happy at the end of the day. I think this is an example of one of those votes. This is an example of a hard problem that the city has been facing that is representative of the larger problem of climate change and climate injustices that our country, really the world, is facing. So just to be totally clear, our current economic system, our current way of life in our society, is headed towards a crisis point in terms of the global impact of a warming planet, changing weather patterns, that we are going to see directly affecting Boston's bottom line and our residents' quality of life. This plastic bag ordinance is one example of a small step that is completely within the city's control to take. And we can't look at it as, is the cost zero cents when you go to the checkout counter or five cents for reuse a thicker plastic bag or a paper bag? There is a tremendous cost to doing nothing on every single one of these climate initiatives. Again, we are sitting in a place where our generation, the current millennial generation, is facing economic mobility prospects that are not as favorable as previous generations. My two sons' generation is looking at a world in which there will be tremendous struggles based on how we decide the problems before us today related to climate change, related to income inequality, related to racial disparities. So what we're doing today is, yes, talking about a percentage of the plastic waste stream in Boston. It will make a tremendous impact in terms of our neighborhoods' livability, our taxpayer dollars being used in the right way, in terms of our waste management, but it's really about much more than that. It's about taking that affirmative step and joining every other community that has made the statement that we are going to take responsibility for climate justice. We're going to take responsibility for our role in protecting and ensuring a livable future for generations to come. So I personally think that there is no better plastic bag proposal in the country than the one that Counsel O'Malley and that all of us have worked on together. It balances fairness to small businesses. It balances the greater needs of Boston's environment and public health, and also creates a very long and accessible transition period so that we can do all of the outreach right. This is an example where we are going to take a vote today that is going to make a big statement, a small change that will have a huge impact. I couldn't be prouder to stand behind this. We are doing the outreach. We are bringing people together. We're engaging community and allowing everyone to be part of making that change for a better world, for our kids and kids to come after that. So thank you so much for your partnership, and thank you, everyone, for all the conversations. I know I've had multiple conversations with each one of my colleagues. Everyone is coming at this from a place where they really care about how we make the, take that responsibility, make the best use of our official roles on the council. So thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wu. Chair recognizes Counsel Presley.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and I'll lend my voice to the chorus here in commending Counsel O'Malley and Counsel President Wu for your leadership, your passion, your due diligence on all echo matters, but on what has been a long sojourn here. I just wanted to bring the issue up that has come up time and time again throughout this debate, which is one that we should take seriously and certainly not give short shrift to, and that is the issue of class. And, you know, while I recognize there is no single solution for our city, Commonwealth, and country's environmental challenges, I recognize, share, and am sensitive to the concerns expressed about the possible impacts of this policy on our low-income communities and seniors. It is important, however, to note that all too often, our low-income, senior, communities of color, these are the same communities and populations that are burdened by toxic dumping grounds, rampant litter in their communities that they are forced to navigate on a daily basis, food deserts, and the threat of rising sea levels, which is rampant litter is really what this ordinance is about. Further, after listening and organizing alongside numerous community and environmental groups, many of whom are represented here today, I am more certain now than ever that people of every age, of every socioeconomic status, and of every race care about our planet, reducing our carbon footprint, and using their power to send a message that sustainability matters. I don't have to guess. I know this. When we look at a Roxbury grocery store like Save-A-Lot, which caters to a low-income resident and grocer, those families have for years made the conscious choice to bring reusable bags, and if they don't have one, to pay the additional expense to purchase a plastic bag. That's a conscious decision that they've made because they do care about reducing our carbon footprint and sending a message that sustainability matters, and they're willing to make that sacrifice. That is why I plan to vote in support of the plastic bag reduction ordinance. Should this ordinance pass, I'd encourage the city of Boston to explore ways to ease the burden of what will really require a cultural shift by providing free reusable tote bags at accessible and convenient venues throughout the city, especially for our low-income residents and seniors. This ordinance is a critical step towards a greener, cleaner, and more sustainable Boston, and look forward to voting in the affirmative. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Presley. Would any other colleagues like to speak on this matter? Seeing no lights, Counsel Flaherty has requested a, has made a motion for a vote on docket... Oh, thank you, Madam Clerk. My apologies. Counsel Jackson could not be at this meeting but also had submitted a statement related to this docket. Madam Clerk, could you please read that statement into the record?
Thank you, Madam President. Tito Jackson, District 7, City Counselor, Chair of Committee on Education, 11/29/2017. Statement by City Counsel Tito Jackson in support of an ordinance regarding the reduction of plastic bags in Boston. I support passage of docket number 0132, an ordinance regarding the reduction of plastic bags in Boston currently being considered by the Boston City Council, and urge my city council colleagues to also support this legislation. Protecting the environment must be central to our concerns as a city council, and I commend Counselors O'Malley and Wu for putting forward this very important piece of legislation. The production and distribution of single-use plastic bags requires enormous amounts of water and fossil fuel energy resources, increasing the sustainability, the release of harmful chemicals, and carbon dioxide into our atmosphere. I am very mindful that the residents of my district have had some of the highest rates of asthma in the city of Boston, and I believe curbing plastic bag use will ultimately help contribute to a cleaner and healthier environment for all of us. Furthermore, single-use plastic bags, often used only for a short few minutes, may remain in our neighborhoods' parks and open spaces for years to come. They pose a threat to plants and animal life and contribute significantly to the problems of litter. I acknowledge the short-term economic burden this ordinance may place on some of our elders and the least affluent of our residents, especially in my district, and I do not take this concern lightly at all. I therefore urge the city of Boston to fully commit to distributing reusable bags to those truly in need of them, as other municipalities have done. I do nonetheless support the ordinance and believe it to be an important step in both addressing harmful environmental practices and promoting better healthcare outcomes for all of Boston's residents.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you to Counsel Jackson. At this time, Counsel Flaherty moves for a vote on docket number 0... Oh, sorry, I'm on the wrong. On docket number 0132. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Down the vote.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll on docket 0132?
Thank you. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Siomo.
Yes.
Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Savi George.
Yes.
Counsel Savi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Jackson. Counsel Lamatina.
Yes.
Counsel Lamatina, yes. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Absolutely, yes.
We'll put you down twice. Counsel Presley. Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. And Counsel Zecham.
Yes.
Counsel Zecham, yes. Madam President, we have a unanimous vote for docket number 0132.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay. Thank you. We've been very lax with the rules today.
Oh, my God, the scene is loud.
Thank you, everyone. Docket number 0132. Thank you. Our council council has informed me that I neglected to mention that this is, the version we are talking about is in a new draft because of the changes that have been outlined. So docket number 0132 has been passed unanimously in a new draft, and I want to thank everyone again. But we've been very lax with the rules, so no more applause or loud sounds from here on out. Thank you. Reports of committees, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 0340, the Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on March 1, 2017, docket number 0340. Message and order approving a home rule petition to the General Court entitled, "Petition for a Special Law Regarding an Act Authorizing Economic Development and Industrial Corporation of Boston," EDIC, "to qualify a single-energy services company for the design, construction, operation, maintenance, and financing of a district energy microgrid project and related energy-saving performance contracts to serve public and private owners and tenants in the Raymond L. Marine, Raymond L. Flynn Marine Park." Submits a report recommending the home rule ought to pass.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Counsel Flaherty.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Government Operations held a hearing on November 16 with respect to docket 0340. This matter was sponsored by Mayor Walsh and referred to the committee back on March 1, 2017. Docket 0340 seeks to authorize the EDIC to qualify as a single-energy service company for direct, for district energy microgrid project and energy management contract within the Raymond L. Flynn Marine Industrial Park, and finance it with private equity or debt. District Energy is a system that supplies thermal energy to multiple buildings via underground pipes carrying steam, hot water, and cold water. A microgrid is an electrical distribution network that can serve multiple buildings in a local area and can enter into an island mode by separating from larger electrical grid when there is a major outage, self-supplying the microgrid network with locally generated electricity. District Energy and microgrid projects provide added resiliency, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and lower energy costs for their customers. The Raymond L. Flynn Marine Park is a 191-acre former military base owned by EDIC, and it's a prime location for a district energy microgrid project because of its location along the South Boston waterfront, as well as its service to tenants, including large industrial energy users. Brad Swing, Representative of Administration, he's the Director of Energy Policy and Programming for the City of Boston, as well as Manuel Esquivel, Senior Infrastructure and Energy Planning Fellow from the Boston Planning and Development Agency. They both testified on behalf of the administration. We learned from Director Swing that the city had been considering looking into such a project now for four years. However, the compatibility of such project with single-owner campus systems with respect to other districts such as the Greater, in the Greater Austin area, including Boston-area hospitals, Harvard University, and Biogen in Cambridge, were examples. However, the way that the system is set up, we weren't able to, the city wasn't able to approve its own RFP. So Director Swing highlighted the onsite electricity with microgrid that will continue if the main grid goes down, making these projects integral to the city's strategy for resiliency and preparation for climate change. Director Swing also reported that the district energy microgrid project also will support lower energy costs for their users. He also clarified that through the EDIC board, although they initially had authorized an RFQ for this project, an RFQ was actually never distributed because the city's authority in doing so was questioned, which is why we're here today. The committee discussed the existing statutory authority for the city regarding these types of projects, which currently exist only for public projects and not when a public-private partnership is involved. Director Swing explained that the project would be self-funded. It would not be financed from the capital budget. Lastly, the committee discussed the potential concerns and objections from fossil fuel and utility companies from the state. Director Swing stated that the city has been working with the stakeholders on feasibility and felt pretty optimistic that should this home rule petition pass, that the city would be able to move forward with the feasibility study in preparation for the issuance of an RFQ. So at this time, it's Chair of Government Operations asking that docket 0340 ought to pass. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. At this time, Counsel Flaherty moves for passage of docket 0340. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0340 has been passed. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0751 and 0752 together?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0751, the Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on May 24, 2017, docket number 0751. Message and order approving a petition for a special law regarding an act relative to certain affordable housing in the Roxbury section of the city of Boston. Submits a report recommending the home rule petition ought to pass. Docket number 0752, the Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on May 24, 2017, docket number 0752. Message and order approving a petition for a special law regarding an act relative to certain affordable housing in the Jamaica Plain section of the city of Boston. Submits a report recommending the home rule petition ought to pass.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chair recognizes the-
Chair recognizes the Chair of Government Operations, Counselor Flaherty.
This matter was sponsored by the mayor. Docket 0751 seeks to revive a federally-funded Lenox Public Housing Project and the state-funded Camden Public Housing Project by using federal funds. Similarly, docket 0752 seeks to revive the federally-funded Amory Street Public Housing Development by using federal funds. So both of these proposals are intended to streamline the sub-bid process that will help decrease costs while still maintaining a transparent regulatory process. Lydia Agro from the BHA, Chief of Staff Kate Bennett, BHA Director of Planning, offered testimony in support of the dockets, explaining that with respect to Chapter 149 of the Mass. General Laws, it requires the redevelopments to adhere to a structured filed sub-bid process with separate general contractor and subcontract selection. So the Lenox Camden and the Amory Street developments are intended to be, you know, full comprehensive rehabilitations without the need for demolition or displacement or offsite—in offsite location of residence. So the Lenox Camden will see a one-to-one replacement of 357 units upon completion, and Amory Street will preserve the existing public housing units for elderly and disabled persons, but they'll see an addition of some new mixed-income units, including some market-rate units, bringing that up to 558 units upon completion. The BHA will continue to own the land for both developments, and they'll lease it to development partners. We're starting to see more of this happening as the federal government has turned their back on the BHA, and so it's to note that the BHA has filed similar legislation for Whittier Street, Orion Heights, Bromley Heat, Mission Main, Orchard Garden, Maverick Garden, West Broadway Homes, Oak Colony, Washington Beach, and Franklin Hill Developments. So these public-private partnerships are a way for us to help, you know, enable the BHA to access funding that it would not otherwise be able to do. So at this time, as Chair of Committee on Government Operations, asking that both dockets 0751 and 0752 ought to pass. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this—at this point, the Chair of Government Operations moves for—we'll vote on these separately. Moves for passage of docket 0751. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0751 has passed. At this time, the Chair of Government Operations moves for passage of docket number 0752. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Madam—Madam Clerk, will you please record that? Madam Clerk? Docket 1433.
Docket number 1433, order for the City Council's Special Committee on the Community Preservation Act, hold interviews of finalists for appointments to the Community Preservation Committee.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the committee, Counselor Flaherty.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Quick update and an opportunity to publicly congratulate the four applicants to be—to be selected to serve on the CPC. For everyone's edification, there was 114 individuals who had submitted their application. From that, we had several rounds of the application review process, which consisted of some assistance from an advisory working group, along with city council staff, as sorting through the applications in a very fair and objective and transparent manner. That number of candidates initially was reduced to 37, and then later reduced to—16. So on both Monday, November 20th and Monday, November 27th, the City Council's Special Committee of the Community Preservation Act chaired and co-chaired by myself and Counselor Campbell, we—along with everyone—to appreciate everyone's participation with respect to holding the interviews and bunkering down for both of those Mondays to get this done. So I'm happy and proud to announce that the selection of Ying Wang, Kanan Thiravagandam, Madeline Tenna, and Matt Kiefer will be serving as the CPC, as the Community Preservation Committee. That said, that we've got a hearing scheduled for Tuesday, December 5th, at 10:00 a.m. in this chamber for a final vetting. So if anyone was not able to—to participate in some capacity or wish to come and ask any final questions, you're encouraged to attend. Again, that's Tuesday, December 5th, at 10:00 a.m., a final vetting of Ying Wang, Kanan Thiravagandam, Madeline Tenna, and Matt Kiefer. On behalf of the council, I want to congratulate them for putting their hat in the ring, and also congratulate the 114 residents of our city that were willing to step forward and participate, and also for the finalists, as we can all attest, the folks that were doing the interviews, that we had some highly skilled and very talented, committed residents of our city. Unfortunately, we couldn't select all of them. Would have been great to be able to have all 114 serve, and even when we were able to narrow it down to the—to the final 16, the fact that four had emerged from that group of candidates is, I think, a testament to the skillset and the disciplines that they're going to bring, joining the other five men—members as we move forward in dispersing community preservation funds. So that said, look forward to seeing everybody on the 5th. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With that, docket number 1433 will remain in committee for this next one.
Docket number 1392, message and order approving appropriation of $1,250,000 from the Edward Ingersoll Brown Fund for projects that will ornament the city streets, ways, squares, and parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With that, Count—Chair recognizes Counselor Lamontina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair—President.
Vice President.
Vice President. It's nice to hear that. Thank you. Yesterday, we held—the Boston City Council Committee on Parks Recreation and Transportation held a hearing on docket number 1392. It was a message and order appropriating $1,250,000 from the Brown Fund for projects around the city. At—at the hearing yesterday, it was a new—our new Senior Assistant Collective Treasurer, Drew Smith, Richard DiPiano, who's president, was the Second Assistant Collective Treasurer from the Treasury Department was there, and—Mrs. Tavish, who was Chief Diversity Office for the City of Boston. So as you know, the Brown Fund has $15 million in it. It was established in 1892. Usually, every year, we spend probably $750,000 from the Brown Fund, but this year, we're spending $1,250,000. So if you look at my report, there's numerous projects around the city. Some of them are going to be a fund for fabrication and installation of a memorial honoring the victims, or the 2013 Boston Marathon, Carmen Square. So all our neighborhoods will be receiving some money to—as part of this Brown Fund. So with that, I ask you to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lamontina. With that, Counselor Lamontina moves for suspension and passage of docket number 1392. All those in favor said aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Madam Clerk, will you read docket number 06002—docket 1377 together, please?
Thank you.
Endocket 1392 has passed.
Docket number 0600, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $41,412 in the form of a grant awarded by—by demand abolition to be administered by the Police Department. The grant would fund cities empowered—empowered against sexual exploitation, known as CESE Network, Phase 2 for law enforcement interventions, technology, and research-based innovations. Docket number 1005, message and order authorizing the Police Department to accept and expend a grant of $250,000 from the Regional Intelligence Center FY17 allocation, awarded by the Mass. Executive Office of Public Safety and Security to upgrade, expand, and integrate technology and protocols related to anti-terrorism, anti-crime, anti-gang, and emergency response. Docket number 1051, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend a grant of $3,253,317 for the FY18 Public Safety Answering Point, known as PSAP, Support and Incentive Grant, awarded by the Mass. Executive Office of Public Safety and Security to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund the cost associated with providing enhanced 911 services. Docket number 1053, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend a grant of $684,121 for the FY18 State 911 Training Grant, awarded by the Mass. Executive Office of Public Safety, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund training and certification of enhanced 911 telecommunications staff. Docket number 1300, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $115,872 in the form of a grant for the 27—for the FY27 Port Security Grant Program, awarded by the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant would fund the installation and repowering of the Boston Police Department Harbor Patrol Unit vessels, the 31 Safe Boat, and the 28 Crivik Boat. Docket number 1377, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend a grant of $225,044 for the FY2017 DNA Capacity Enhancement and Backlog Reduction Program, awarded by the National Institute of Justice, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant would fund two criminalist positions, lab supplies, and continuing education expenses.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chair recognizes Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Madam Clerk, for reading all those dockets. So the committee heard testimony from the representatives of the Boston Police Department on these six dockets yesterday. I want to thank my Vice Chair, Counselor McCarthy, for attending, as well as Counselor Asabi George for attending as well. Bear with me, it was quite a bit. There were six dockets. So I'll start with docket number 0600. This grant would fund the cities empowered against sexual exploitation, which is called CESE. This is Phase 2. They received funding previously for Phase 1, and the funding will be used for law enforcement interventions, technology, and research-based innovations. Research-based innovations, specifically three categories, including the use of enforcement tactics that test social media sites, such as Google Ad Campaigns and Facebook, to deter folks from engaging in this behavior. Also, they use meme—memes and video with biobureaucer websites to support and reverse —and do reverse stings. It also supports the development of work with the clergy community, as well as development of a legislative subcommittee to focus on local and state law efforts to promote biodeterrence. I want to thank Maria Chevers, who actually testified on this docket, who's a Director of Office Research and Development at BPD. Docket number 1005, we heard from David Carabin, who's the Director of the BRIC, Boston Regional Intelligence Center. This grant will be used for security upgrades, expansion, and integration of technology and protocols related to anti-terrorism, anti-crime, anti-gang, and emergency response. The funding will be used to contract with IBM to acquire technology—to acquire technology to use for—to use for—across different platforms. So right now, they actually engage with several different databases. In order to streamline that, they're contracting with IBM to make it easier for their officers and analyst—and analysts to go into one system, thereby pulling back information from one system through one system and making connections versus having to go through each system. Docket number 1051, we heard from Deputy Superintendent and Commander Michael Cox, who runs the Operations Division Bureau of Field Services, and he testified that docket number 1051 will be used to fund costs associated with providing enhanced 911 services. These funds will not only be used for BPD services, but also the Fire Department, as well as EMS, and it's used to upgrade their systems and also provide training for their 911 operators. Additionally, it will be used to defray the cost of salary for the enhanced 911 telecommunicator personnel, including 911 telecommunicators who are emergency—who operate as emergency dispatchers and supervisors. Deputy Superintendent Cox also testified on docket number 1053. This grant will fund training and certification, also of enhanced 911 telecommunications staff. It will be used to provide monies for trainings, not only for the Police Department, but also EMS, as well as the Fire Department. Docket number 101300, we heard from Sergeant Joseph Chevers, who runs the Boston Police Harbor Patrol Unit, who's a harbor master, as well as Lieutenant Kevin McGoldrick, who runs the Boston Police Department's Special Operations Division. Both of them provided testimony that this grant will fund the installation and repowering of the Police Department's Harbor Patrol Unit vessels, the 31-foot safe and a 28—28-foot kvatchik boat. The funds will be used to purchase two engines, as the current set of engines for both vessels are reaching their maximum engine hours. Lastly, docket number 1377, we heard from Julie James, who's a criminalist at BPD, who works in the crime laboratory there. She provided testimony that this grant will be used to fund two criminalist positions, also for lab supplies and continuing education expenses for the folks who work in the crime laboratory. It will allow the BPD Crime Lab to not only meet caseload demands, but to work tremendously hard, frankly, to reduce the backlog of cases. I—as Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, I ask that these six dock—six dockets pass and recommend that they pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. With that, Counselor Campbell moves—we're going to vote on these separately. Counselor Campbell moves for suspension and passage of docket number 0600. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Docket 0600 has passed. Excuse me. Counselor Campbell moves—moves for suspension and passage of docket number 1005. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket number 1005 has passed. Counselor Campbell moves for suspension and passage of docket number 1051. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Docket number 1051 has passed. Counselor Campbell moves for suspension and passage of docket number 1053. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket number 1053 has passed. Counselor Campbell moves for suspension and passage of docket number 1300. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket number 1300 has passed. Counselor Campbell moves for suspension and passage of docket number 1377. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Docket number 1377 has passed. Madam Clerk, will you please read docket number 1391?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Docket number 1391, message and order for supplemental appropriation request in the amount of $2 million. This funding became available as a result of an unanticipated payment during the fiscal year 2018 to the city of Boston through the transfer of old City Hall leases. The funding will be used to allow the Boston Centers for Youth and Families to enter into a grant agreement with the Urban Edge, a community-based nonprofit, to assist in their efforts to bring a new youth recreation center, which will include an ice skating rink and field house to Jackson Square.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, Counselor Siomo.
Thank you, Madam President. The Ways and Means Committee held its hearing yesterday regarding the Urban Edge proposal. We had testimony provided by Will Morales from the Boston Center for Youth and Families, as well as Justin Sterrett, the Office of Budget Management, as well as Jim Williamson, Assistant Budget Director, all testified on behalf of the administration. This $2 million supplemental appropriation will support the creation of a new youth recreation center in Jackson Square, an effort that has been 15 years in the making. Was—it was heavily advocated for by local youth and will be an integral part of the Jackson Square planning initiative. This is a great public-private partnership. I believe they have a goal of $21 million to make this a reality, and they're almost to $18 million as we speak. The funding for this program is—the result of a one-time payment to the city following the renegotiation and extension of leases of old City Hall. I'd like to thank Counselor Baker for his questions regarding—the tax agreement and the benefits to the city, and also to Ron Rakaus, our city assessor, who stepped into the hearing because— of his extensive knowledge of the history and specifics of the two transactions, a transfer of the lease and extension of the tax agreement that resulted in this and other revenue. It is clear that this is a renegotiation, was a win for the city, and the $2 million appropriation from revenues will help close the funding gap for a much-needed community investment. I recommend passage of docket 1391.
Thank you, Counsel Siomo. Counsel O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and just wanted to thank the good Chairman of Ways and Means for his diligent work. Very briefly, I just wanted to echo the comments I made yesterday on this. This will be absolutely transformative for the youth of the City of Boston. For many, many years, for decades now, the Kelly Rink has been a temporary facility, an outdoor facility, for youth rec and learning opportunities. It's been wonderful, but it's time that we're able to get a permanent facility. This has been a labor of love that predates my election to this body seven years ago, and because of great leadership of Urban Edge, of so many local nonprofits, of the Commonwealth, and most importantly, and this cannot be understated, this $2 million commitment from the City of Boston and this mayor will be absolutely transformative. We're in the end zone. This is going to get us to our goal. This will be remarkable. I mentioned this yesterday, and I think it bears repeating. Right probably the end of October, at the announcement for this $2 million support from the city, I was there, Counsel at Large Asabi George. Counsel Jackson was with Mayor Walsh as he was making this announcement. It was about 3:30 in the afternoon, and on that day, just across the street at the Mildred Haley Housing Development, a young man was killed. Now, I'm not suggesting, I'm not naive enough to suggest that had this youth rec center been there, that life would have been saved. However, it is important to note that this will give opportunities for kids to learn to skate, to learn to get exercise, to work. There's going to be a learning component as well. This will be transformative, not only for the youth of Roxbury and Jamaica Plain, but for the city writ large, and I'm so proud of our Ways and Means Chair and this administration for stepping up to the plate. This will be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. At this time, Counsel Siomo moves for acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1391. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1391 has been passed.
Docket number 1397, message and order approving an increase in senior citizen property tax work-off credit amount from $1,000 per fiscal year to a maximum of $1,500 per fiscal year effective fiscal year 2019. By increasing the credit amount, the city will be able to offer participating seniors the maximal allowable credit pursuant to Section 5K of Chapter 59 of the Massachusetts General Laws, as most recently amended by Section 127 of Chapter 218 of the Acts of 2016.
Chair recognizes Counsel Siomo on docket 1397.
Thank you again, Madam President. Hearing was held again yesterday by Ways and Means. We had testimony provided by Commissioner Ron Racco. This has been a program in existence for many years now, and the legislature gave us the ability to up the amount that seniors can write off if they volunteer in various nonprofits around the city. So, it's a pro forma hearing. We're going to allow the seniors to capture 1,500 instead of 1,000 off. That, in addition to the 35% residential exemption, can help a lot of seniors remain in their home, and if you have a single-family home, you basically wipe out your tax bill with the exemption and this write-off. So, I recommend we pass.
Thank you, Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo moves for passage of docket 1397. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1397 has been passed.
Docket number 1424, message and order for the approval of an appropriation of $123,55,413 for the purpose of paying costs of the Boston Arts Academy, which is a new school facility to be built on the site of the current Boston Arts Academy located at 174 Ipswich Street in the City of Boston.
On docket 1424, Chair again recognizes Chairman of the Ways and Means Committee, Counsel Siomo.
Again, Madam President. We also had this hearing yesterday. We had Brian McLaughlin, the Chief of Staff of Property and Construction Management, as well as Jim McQueen, the Senior Project Manager for Boston Public Facilities Department, John Hanlon, Chief of Operations, and Boston Public Schools Headmaster for the Boston Arts Academy, Ann Clark. As we know from many, well, many of us that have been here for more than five or six years know that Boston Arts Academy has had fits and starts along the way for relocation, co-location, and other various attempts to really upgrade the facility in a meaningful way, and this appropriation will do that as part of our submission to the Mass School Building Authority. All of our previous expenditures have been reimbursed to the tune of about 65%, so the feasibility study, the schematic design, all those issues have been reimbursed. This appropriation for the $124,755,413 will also be eligible for reimbursement of up to 65%. There was a lot of testimony, a few folks testified, but a lot of the young people that came are juniors and seniors now to support it, and these are kids that won't actually experience this great building, but it just showed the meaningful way that they care about this school, and it's going to serve 500 kids, an addition of about 60 more students. We're trying to up that, thanks to Counsel Flaherty. So, I recommend passage.
Thank you, Counsel Siomo.
I'm sorry. Aside for further action.
Thank you, Counsel Siomo. Counsel Zachem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Chairman Siomo and the administration for bringing this forward. This Boston Arts Academy is in District Eight. It's a wonderful facility. It's always had great teachers. It's always had great students, world-class, but unfortunately, we have not recently had world-class facilities. I toured this building very early on in my time on the council several years ago, and it was exciting and inspiring to see what the students and teachers were doing. It was disappointing to see the state of many of the facilities there, using restrooms as storerooms, no acceptable practice rooms for music, for dance studios. So, this is very exciting to see. I know the people in the neighborhood, as well as the school community, is very excited about this, and I look forward to supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Zachem. And Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to echo a little bit of what Counsel Siomo had to say. I've been here for six years. Every year, the Arts Academy comes up. We're finally moving on this, but also to, you know, thank the mayor's office and the work that happens over Brian McLaughlin and the public facilities, the people at public facilities. We did 20 years and never got any money from the Mass Building Authority, and here it is. Just in this one project, I think we're getting something like $47 million. So, that's, you know, that's a credit to the administration, and I just wanted to make sure that people know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. At this time, Counsel Siomo requests the first reading for docket 1424. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam President. Counsel Baker?
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Campbell?
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Siomo? Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Asabi George?
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Jackson? Counsel Lamatina?
Yes.
Counsel Lamatina, yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yeah.
Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel O'Malley?
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley?
Yes.
Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Wu?
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. And Counsel Zachem?
Yes.
Counsel Zachem, yes. Madam President, docket number 1424 has received its first reading with unanimous vote, and is assigned for further action.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 1424 has received a unanimous first reading and will be assigned for further action.
Docket number 1455, orders that pursuant to Chapter 40, Section 56, the residential factor in the City of Boston for FY 2018 shall be the minimum residential factor as determined by the Commissioner of Revenue pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 58, Section 1A, and be it further that pursuant to Chapter 59, Section 5C, as amended, a residential exemption in the amount of value equal to 35% of the average assessed value of all Class I residential parcels in the City of Boston be and hereby is approved for fiscal year 2018.
Counsel Siomo has been having a lot of hearings lately. Thank you. Please go ahead, Counsel.
Thank you, Madam President. The property tax classification and the adoption of the minimum residential factor and owner-occupied exemption for the City of Boston are annually reviewed before the property tax rate can be determined. Ron Racco, our Commissioner of Assessing, testified on behalf of the administration and reported that the minimum residential factor allows maximum discount to property owners. You may recall that last year, the state adopted a maximum 35% exemption, which this council quickly took advantage of to increase the discount to property owners. The 35% exemption is offered again this year and will help reduce the burden on residential taxpayers, help to make homeownership more affordable, and contribute to the stability of our neighborhoods. I recommend passage. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Siomo. This time, Counsel Siomo moves for passage of docket 1455. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1455 has been passed.
Docket number 0199, order that the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities will host a series of policy briefings related to key topics in early education and childcare.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, Counsel Presley.
Thank you, Madam President. Last night, we held our fifth in a series of seven policy briefings regarding early education and care. We were in Dorchester at the Brookview House. I want to thank my colleagues for your partnership, Counsel Wu, Counsel Campbell, Counsel Asabi George, for your partnership on what has been an informative and at times infuriating fact-finding mission. Our policy briefing last night focused on access to childcare for workers that have non-standard work hours. You may recall that in 2010, Counsel Ross and I co-authored, and with your support, passed an ordinance, bringing greater transparency around the Boston Residents' Jobs Policy. That transparency resulted in greater accountability and moving the needle. The Boston Employment Commission data now has to be online, and in that, we saw an increase in the number of women in the trades, which is something to celebrate. We do want the almost 40% of single female-headed households in this city to see the trades as a viable professional, you know, pathway and option for them. So, it's been great to see those numbers increase, and 50% of those women, we now have three times more women in the trades than we did eight years ago, 50% of them are women of color. What we learned in doing that audit, where that look back on the impact of that ordinance, is with that, we now have a situation where, that has been highlighted or exacerbated, that they don't have childcare. And that's not only for the construction industry. So, this is true for people in the hospitality industry. I was a hotel worker myself, off and on for some six years, and we have shifts that would start at 5:30 or 6:00 a.m., or shifts that would begin at 4:00 and go until midnight. People that are doing non-residential construction, their shifts could be from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., when most childcare providers don't open until 8:00 a.m. So, this is a real deficit when it comes to access. So, as we continue to build pathways and expand access to jobs in fields such as the building trades, hospitality, and the medical fields, we are finding more and more a chicken and egg problem, which was highlighted last night. In order to get into these fields specifically, it begins with a training program, followed by overnight shifts or early morning shifts to build seniority. Well, we heard firsthand last night from two women currently experiencing homelessness who have found work and training programs, but are being held back because of their lack of access to childcare. It was honest and courageous testimony, and I urge all of my colleagues, and thank you, Counsel Asabi George, for being there last night, to review the tape and to hear directly from them. What's happening here is we are penalizing families. We are penalizing families who are doing the right thing. In fact, they're doing everything. When we heard from families, two-headed households, the husband works three jobs, and the mother is in school. They have two children, are expecting one, and are experiencing homelessness. I mean, obviously, it begs a larger question here. When you have people working three jobs, one person, and another who's in school to develop and advance themselves, and one, they can't find an affordable place to live in the city, and two, they're in low-wage, non-standard-hour jobs, and they have no childcare. They are doing everything right to be self-sufficient and to positively contribute to this city and our economy, and we are holding them back. This impacts a large number of families nationwide, and thank you for your indulgence, because these statistics are sobering. According to Sarah Jimenez, who is a researcher with Community Labor United, and we thank them for their partnership in making last night's hearing a success, 23% of working parents with children have non-standard work schedules, 23%. That number rises to 32% when looking at low-income families. And then, here's the kicker. In metro Boston, 40%, 40% of children and families that are eligible for childcare subsidies have a need for care during non-standard work hours. And this gap between demand for childcare and access is projected to grow. My final statistics, as eight of the 10 occupations that are characterized as non-standard work hours are among the thirtieth fasting-growing occupations in the country. So, there's a list of the 30 fastest-growing occupations in the nation, and 10 of those occupations, and I'll get the list to you later, are characterized as non-standard work hours amongst the 30, and they have zero childcare. And we commend Counsel Wu for her push in new development and existing for there to be onsite childcare, but for many of these industries, you're not going to have onsite childcare on a construction site. It's liability. It's not safe. So, what are we going to do? We also heard testimony from Helen Blank, the Director of Childcare at the National Women's Law Center, about some concrete things other cities and states are doing to incentivize weeknight and weekend childcare. So, I'm excited about the solutions that were offered. I'm sobered by the testimonies that were offered. We really need to be a leader and a partner in this to even out this playing field, so these amazing and inspiring families looking to contribute to their communities and to our economy can bring that contribution fully to bear. Again, I want to thank Counsel President Wu for initiating this cooperative effort here. I look forward to the remaining two policy briefings, and ultimately, for the report that will come out of those briefings that will give us all a roadmap forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Presley. Docket number 0199 will remain in the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities. motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 1487, Counsel Wu offered the following ordinance, amending City of Boston Code, Chapter 17-19, regulating acoustic live entertainment.
Chair recognizes Counsel Wu.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. This ordinance is really just a very minor amendment that would remove the sunset clause on the ordinance that the council had passed last year. Again, just to remind everyone, acoustic on main was, this ordinance, commonly called acoustic on main, is an example of the best types of partnership that the council and the administration and the mayor have had. I'm so proud of the work that has come out of this and that went into it. We brought together all different agencies, the mayor himself, supporting it from day one, bringing in inspectional services, licensing, Boston police, anyone who has anything to do with small businesses or entertainment, and saying, can we make it easier for businesses to offer acoustic acts, some sort of entertainment? We've heard from businesses and our Main Streets Directors that this has directly meant that not only are the Friday, Saturday nights the busy nights, but when they have spoken word, or when they can have a local band there, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday nights are also then filled with residents from the neighborhood. So, we're trying to celebrate and encourage our arts community. We're trying to support our small businesses. Again, the ordinance had removed any permitting, licensing, registration fees, red tape for businesses to be able to offer acoustic live entertainment with up to five performers, something that doesn't disturb the abutting neighbors. We have not received any complaints about this. We had passed it with a one-year sunset clause, and I'm asking for us to evaluate removing that and making this permanent. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wu. Chair recognizes Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Chair. Thank you, Counsel Wu, for bringing this up. Again, I have three Main Streets in District Five, and all three have utilized the acoustic on main to their benefit. It's a wonderful thing. If we, when we have the hearing, I'll be there, and I'll be pushing it as hard as anybody else. And on Sunday mornings at the Fairmont Grill... And on Sunday mornings at Fairmont Grill, jazz brunch, because of Michelle Wu, I'm telling you, it's a great, great morning. You've got to get there early, and chicken and waffles is the go-to, just saying.
Would you like to sign on, Counselor McCarthy?
I would.
Please. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak, or just sign on? Will you please sign on, Counselor Campbell? Please sign on, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Lamontina, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Presley, Counselor Zachem? Will you please also add my name, Madam Clerk? And with that, will you place docket number 1487 in government operations? Thank you.
Docket number 14, excuse me, 1488, Counselor Baker offered the following order for hearing regarding a medical marijuana dispensary at 50 Clapp Street.
Counselor Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, this is just, this is just to kind of allow a group to move forward. We've kind of set up a process where before a group can move forward anyplace in the city, they need to come to the legislative branch of the local government, which would be us, and we would, we're looking, they're looking for a letter of non-opposition to be able to go to the zoning board. The proponents got a vote in front of the McCormick Group the other night, although it was a tight vote, they actually won the vote, which was surprising. So this is just us moving forward with this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Baker. Docket number 1488 will be assigned to the Committee on Planning and Development.
Docket number 1489, Counselor O'Malley offered the following resolution urging the Federal Communications Commission, FCC, and the Massachusetts delegation in Congress to protect and preserve the regulations of net neutrality.
Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise today in order to discuss an issue of protecting access to a utility that is crucial in our modern-day society, the internet. I want to begin by thanking Will Poff Webster, the newest member of Team O'Malley, who's done some great research on this. I urge our body today to support net neutrality for internet services and to oppose the recent FCC, the Federal Communication Commission's proposal to end net neutrality. The history and innovation of the internet is inextricably linked to our city, with the numerous colleges, universities, and research labs that are based here. The idea of net neutrality is simple. It means that all content on the internet must be treated equally and be equally accessible to consumers. A proposed regulatory change by the FCC seeks to end that tradition of accessibility and equality of content. In 2015, the Obama administration's FCC codified net neutrality by classifying internet providers as common carriers under Title II of the Communications Act. The recent threat to net neutrality comes from this current FCC reclassifying providers under Title I, which gives far less ability to enforce net neutrality. Ending net neutrality could allow for internet providers like Comcast and Verizon to favor some content over others, prioritizing websites and businesses that are able to pay more. I see your eyes glossing over, and I understand it was very much the same for me. I'd encourage you all to see John Oliver's 20-minute YouTube video where he explains this in detail, but suffice it to say, as it comes to net neutrality, you could have a well-known internet service provider, ISP, that many of us use, that happens to also own a network, that could then, if these changes go into effect, slow down streaming services for something like Netflix or Hulu to benefit their programming. This isn't just a hypothetical, this actually happened years ago. Google had a tool called Google Wallet, similar to your Apple Pay or other things, that you had ISP, internet service providers, not accept, so that a consumer would not be able to use it on a handheld device. It's inherently unfair, and it begs the question, that what is the internet? I'd say it's a public tool for all, particularly in this day and age. What the proposed changes that the FCC is debating right now, they hurt our communities, they give big businesses an unfair advantage over local small businesses, and they deprive consumers, all of us, the right to access all online information. Now, in Boston, we have very recently been able to create choices, with Verizon coming in certain neighborhoods. Finally, we've just gotten a choice and an end to the monopoly. This would, this represents real progress, and we should not relinquish that progress by giving more power to ISPs and remove it from the public good. I'm proud to stand with leaders like Senators Elizabeth Warren and Ed Markey, and the millions of Americans who are fighting to protect net neutrality and oppose the FCC's attempt to dismantle our internet protections. With that in mind, I ask for suspension of the rules and adoption of this resolution, and ask that you all join me in opposing the FCC's proposal to end net neutrality, ensuring that the internet continues to be fair, free, and open. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Madam Clerk, could you please add Counselor Zachem's name? Please add Counselor Presley, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor Lamontina, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Baker? Please add the Chair's name. And at this time, Counselor O'Malley moves for suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 1489. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1489 has been adopted. Personnel orders.
Docket number 1490, Counselor Wu for Counselor Zachem.
Counselor Zachem moves for suspension and passage of docket 1490. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1490 has been passed.
Docket number 1491, Counselor Wu for Counselor Zachem.
Counselor Zachem moves for suspension and passage of docket 1491. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1491 has been passed. I am informed by the clerk that there are no late filed matters to add to the agenda, but there are two late filed matters for the consent agenda, which will be added absent objection. Hearing none, the matters are added, and Chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the consent agenda has been adopted. Is there any counselor who wishes to pull a matter from the green sheets? None? And then we'll pause for any statements to the group? Okay, then we will proceed with adjourned today's meeting in memoriam. So if counselors and guests could please rise. Today, the Boston City Council will adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Baker, Joseph Del Tufo. For Counselor Asabi George, Anne Karins Leahy and Yannick Strieski. For Counselor O'Malley, Olivia Wycheck, Jack Whalen, and Fred Wury. For Counselor McCarthy, David Vernon. For Counselors McCarthy and O'Malley, Bridget T. Brighty Sullivan O'Connor. And for Counselor Presley, and on behalf of the entire counselor, on behalf of the entire council, all those lost 75 years ago in the Bay Village Coconut Grove fire. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, we do so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. We are scheduled to meet again Wednesday, December 6th, 12 noon, here in the Ayonella Chamber. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, council is adjourned.